Okay, uh, welcome everybody. Call a meeting to order. Monday, March sixteenth, welcome to our regular board meeting. First order is the, uh, pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do you roll call, uh, all members present with the exception of Mr. Lexup who notified me he was unable to attend tonight. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was, and just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded.
Okay. This time we have an opportunity for public comment. If anybody has any public comment? I can see they're knocking the doors off tonight. I wonder why. Okay, we have no highlight in youth tonight, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is, uh, comments from the board members and superintendent, starting with an update from the wage and benefit committee.
John was not known. Matt had a pretty good, uh, teacher representation. The purpose of the meeting was to confirm a couple of things. Uh, as you recall, as we went into this school year, we approved an alt comp program for teachers that guaranteed teachers four hundred bucks for just base pay increase. And then we had the alt comp based on education credits earned to a certain limit. And if after that there was any money left over, it would go into, um, back to base. Everybody would share. And, uh, so that was the, what was represented going into this year. Teachers have been taking, uh, credits based on that, assurance, if you will, and the question of the committee was, are we prepared to change it? With the consensus of the teachers, like no people have taken those credits in reliance on it, we need to stick with it for the next budgetary year. But there was also consensus that the year after, we should drop the alt comp and go to a flat dollar amount for every teacher without regard to continuing ed and not as a percentage of base. Uh, the teachers then asked if they could take it back and run it by their colleagues in their buildings. We said sure. I think generally what we told the teachers in attendance that barring, we thought that was the fair way to go in that, you know, we have, we wouldn't want, I mean, I personally wouldn't want to give the highest paid teachers the, a higher percent.
Dollar amount.
Higher dollar amount based on a percentage when our youngest teachers are struggling to get above the poverty line. And so basically said, that's probably what we would go with, but we won't vote till the, the next, uh, board meeting late April, that board meeting in late April. So unless barring some compelling reason from the teachers, that's probably what the recommendation will be. And then, uh, pretty much have documented what the, um, may would be should we get an excess levy referendum. And that didn't change. So it's possible with that, not the next fiscal year, but the year fiscal year after that, if we passed a referendum in November or April, that would impact that budget, so that could, that could be changed. So this is a good meeting. I think the, the teachers appreciated that we were asking and, uh, still frustration that we're not doing a referendum next week or in April at the election, but it's just not possible. We can't do that.
So the twenty twenty-one paychecks will reflect the four hundred plus the alt comp plus anything returned that's left over. And the twenty-one, twenty-two cycle will be based on recommendation, a flat dollar amount. So we take pot of money divided up by FTE of the teachers.
And we don't know what that pot of money will be.
And we don't know what that pot of money is, but each teacher would receive the same dollar amount in twenty-one, uh.
Well, based on FTE.
Based on FTE, yeah, right. Well, all teachers will get the same dollar, not by percentage of their own salary.
But it's not the same dollar amount, it's the same dollar.
My percentage of the.
For FTE, all one, all one point O FTE will get the same dollar amount, all point five will get the half of that.
You're right, yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's based on. We didn't mention it, but I presume we're still doing the masters.
Yeah, we said that tonight.
They said get the masters.
Base four hundred, pay the, um, credits, pay the masters, return the balance.
What I didn't know is when we do even across the board, are we gonna do masters then?
Twenty-five hundred?
I think, I, I never heard of it.
We didn't, we didn't.
I don't, but I don't think we've changed that, but that wasn't discussed.
We should add it in though.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else we need out of the wage and benefit committee?
The other, the other thing was to get referendum community planning going sooner than later.
Yep.
Which next board meeting? Another step. So Pam, we are gonna have another wage and benefit meeting, I mean, April sixth at four thirty.
Okay.
You're in the district office.
Yeah. That's specific to receiving feedback from the teachers, from their peer conversations. And know the final numbers or the, uh, estimates based on credits.
Alt comp credits.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Questions from the rest of the board?
Currently, is the master's degree just any master's degree? This one.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on. The next item on the, uh, comments was our school board, comments from our, uh, school board consultant, uh, Lee Pritzel, who was here at the last meeting. Feedback from the board?
Had a great conversation.
I think we got things ironed out. Uh, he wants us to give a presentation of, uh, how long?
Best practices.
Best practices, I guess, the board and how high functioning board works. And so he wants us to give a presentation to the state convention next January, so. We're still in discussions of that, but highly probable that it'll happen, so.
We'll see if we have all these changes, whether we're still a high functioning board.
So.
You may go higher.
That's what we're expecting.
Me too.
Is there, um, you know, any desire to continue work with him? I know sometime we mentioned perhaps doing some some more on our strategic planning. That was more for development. Is that something board's interested in, interested in this time or?
Definitely should do strategic planning. And I think he did a nice job. I don't know if that's a particular forte of his.
It's true. And so, yeah, if you wanna.
Right.
Solicit different. We met consultants?
Can, well, we'll consider it, but I think there's a lot of things that could happen in the in the near future that we need to focus on and, and kind of approach that as it, as it feels more appropriate timing wise.
Mm-hmm. You could also, as we're gonna start community conversations, it would be good to have that input before we meet as a board to set direction for the next three years. So I think that would be a good kind of after the community, rather than saying, here's what we plan, what do you think about it? Why not get their input and say, okay, based on your input, here's what we're.
How do we bring that together?
Okay. Are any other questions or comments with regards to that? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to the next item, which is set a date for our teacher meet and confer meeting.
Is there a date requirement on that? Not later than?
There is not. It's not even required to meet.
Did we want to meet prior to board approval of the salaries?
We probably should.
Would be.
If we wanted that at the April meeting, then we would want to have those set.
Are we talking about the April twenty meeting is when we would approve it?
Yeah.
And the reason being, we want their input on what?
Before we set the budget and their comp in stone at the approval budget. Here's what we're thinking and why.
And, yeah, at least spell out the details of what the recommendation would be if that's up maybe on.
How about doing that in lieu of the wage and benefits?
You're in.
Well, I was gonna s- but the alt comp is set, it's just the only input would be two percent or not. I guess so. I mean, that's what it's gonna be. I mean. You want two percent or do you want one point eight percent? You know what I mean? I think it. Well, we're gonna, but I think, I think we talked about two as a minimum. If it's above that, we'll go above, but that's kind of the bottom lock rate, if you will.
Right.
But for next fiscal year, we're budgeting for two percent, even though inflation is one point eight one or whatever.
Yeah. But you talk, I mean, you, you, you ask their input on anything really. It's not just the two, two percent or one point eight.
But we've received, I mean, we're asking the teachers to go back to their buildings and give us feedback, but, I mean, we can stand in front of the teachers and they can tell us that they would rather get a percentage or whatever. I mean, that's, we've done that in the past and there isn't a uniform voice in, uh, teacher ranks, so.
I, I'm just saying, cause it's a, that's a quick turnaround now. Um, if we wanna have that meeting prior to April twentieth or, uh, what?
I don't think there's any question about, I mean, we told them last year what we're gonna do
Yeah.
next year, and people have been planning for it. We can't, I don't think we can change.
Actually, I think it's more important to set a meeting and confer with the staff, not the teachers. I think we're pretty connected in with the teachers through the wage and benefits. It's mostly,
It's the non-teaching staff, basically, that you see.
Yeah, so I'm thinking the non-tea- I mean, we, we heard some things last year in non-teaching staff that were important things to hear.
But I think what we discussed tonight, we're pretty much locked in for the next budget year. Right. I mean, they can take it back to everybody and talk them, but as far as the next budget year, it's decided, I think, as of the meeting tonight. So there's nothing really for us to confer with them for the next budget cycle. I mean, we could put it off for a few months if we wanted to, because the next budget cycle is locked in.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
And there's, there's no surprises for anybody, so.
Yeah, so do it later.
It's more about, yeah, whatever, engagement, other things than salary.
Do we want to wait till we have school again?
Yeah.
So we don't make a special trip?
Right.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
I think just in case they don't get the word out to everybody, we've gotta make sure that it's at least communicated to them that this is what was decided of the wage and benefits committee meeting.
And this is what will be presented.
This is what's gonna be done for the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that goes out to all the teachers and they, they know, so if somebody doesn't hear it, where am I? How come nobody ever told me?
Yeah.
And maybe you should send something out that says, wage and benefit committee is recommending, consistent with what was represented last year, blah, blah, blah. And then the board anticipates, makes for the, anticipate making their recommendation at the April twenty meeting. If you have feelings that you feel will need to be communicated, then make sure you say it. I mean, that email could go out as soon as this week at some point, and if there's a huge uprising of, wait a minute, no, we've got time to maybe schedule a meeting at that point before the April twentieth meeting.
Or through the wage and benefit meeting to do the same, really.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's more important to have the support staff one before April twentieth.
Okay. Okay, that's the next item on the discussion, s- set a date, uh, for the support.
Well, you still can set a date.
All right, yeah, usually you kinda named the committee.
Yeah.
And set a date.
No, I think we have.
David, Jeff and John still, right?
No, not me. I'm not on that one.
No, that's.
The teacher.
No, no, I meant the teacher.
We just gotta worry about the teachers.
You gotta set it first.
Set a date for the teachers meeting confer right now. It sounds like it's not really critical that it happens before the April regular board meeting because we can't.
Right.
Yeah, we've done it before. So, so it won't be John, but.
So, um, me?
Me it is.
Okay.
Typically do it on separate night. We have stuck with Mondays, just because they seem to work, uh, opposite of board meeting, so May eleventh.
How much do I? Doing it in the evening or at four o'clock or?
Typically start at about
I heard it was.
As soon as it can, three thirty or four.
Yeah, I'd make it, I'll make it work.
Okay. Four. Say four o'clock on the eleventh in the large group instruction room.
Earlier than that's gonna be real tough for me. Four's gonna be cutting it, but I can probably make it.
At four thirty?
It helps, the extra thirty minutes helps me a ton at work. If we go four thirty, I know, I know we have to hang around longer, but.
Four thirty, Monday, May eleventh, in high school lecture room. And the committee? Your last meeting is when, John?
The, uh, twentieth.
Twentieth of April.
So, our new board member.
Pretty much have to determine that now. If we're gonna have the support staff one in April, that makes the teacher committee happen by default then.
When I joined, I was on whatever committee K was on, and then you guys restructured the following year.
Yeah, it's been restructured.
So. If that's something that you wanted to do, I would say even as best until now, most of it.
Yeah.
All right, Jeff, David, Brian. Okay.
Let's be eleven, four thirty, high school.
Yep. Yeah, Pam will send out, he'll send out an invite, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a date, time set for that. Next, we need to set a date and time for the support staff meet and greet, so.
Should theirs be sooner? Or do we need to?
No, this is what we're saying is after.
Like, uh, I would suggest April thirteenth.
Is that a Monday also, Tim?
Eastern Monday, it's the one after Easter. If that makes a difference, if you're gonna be out of town.
Is that a PD day or a school in session? Or who knows?
Yes, they're only at some of them.
Yet to be determined.
PD day, PD day is currently scheduled for all staff to freshen the well.
It's all staff, not just?
Yeah.
Okay.
And who's that committee?
That'd be Trish, Scott and Kirk.
Yeah, Kirk typically cannot before s- six or.
Five thirty, I think.
Except I'm not hearing him say he can't make it right now.
Four o'clock is?
Even since the past gets.
For all staff.
He has to sign leases tonight.
Didn't we do like groups though?
Yeah, but, and they're not gonna be in town at five o'clock, anyway, even if they're at PD.
PD goes till four.
But bus drivers and cooks and, you know, they're, they would have left or will they be at PD? Till.
Depends.
Right.
Um, yeah, bus drivers typically don't have a full leave.
So I'm wondering if that's a school, an end school day is more, um, honoring of their schedules.
If we could.
I don't know that it is or not, but.
It makes no difference to me.
I worked up, there's fifteen groups, yeah, starting at three thirty with a twenty minute slot with five minutes in between. You guys could possibly go to like ten o'clock.
And last time.
With a dinner break.
Last time, more than half of them elected to not participate because they knew where we were at with everything.
Right. Right.
And as, if we communicate upfront, they're, they're welcome to come, but if, if they feel comfortable with what's been presented, some of them have will or won't come. But we might have to find out who would expect to be represented and then build the schedule rather than letting them pick.
Typically, I send it out. I let them pick, and they'd say to me, I'm not interested in coming or, you know, meeting at this time, and then I start.
Condense it back down.
Condensing it and letting, asking them if that would work and just want to get there earlier rather than later. Yeah. You know, put a dinner break in there for you guys to put some snacks or something.
And I think as.
Ideas?
Speaking for myself, the dinner break, we haven't used it.
Okay.
Because we had one after it the last time, so we opted to not do it.
That's right.
It might be better to, I don't, I'm not sure, but it might be better to ask which groups intend to participate and then give the number of slots
Okay, then I'll, yeah.
after the fact, because if someone needs a nine o'clock and someone needs a five thirty, that's one thing, but if we can put them back to back, it would be probably best.
Okay. Or decision on a date or some decided a lower date.
Is that April thirteenth?
Thirteenth is fine if that, if that makes sense for those groups.
Works for the staff.
Yeah, it's for them to come back into town. You know, takes a big convenience.
No one's really on the computer.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that one we usually hold here, right?
We held it in the small conference room last time.
Okay, so April thirteenth, starting or to be determined the time. Are you looking at four thirty?
Typically, we started at three thirty.
Yeah, and I think Kirk somehow made it work.
Well, and he's come when he could come.
Yeah.
At some point, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So let's, yeah, ten and three thirty, and we can, we can adjust that as needed.
Sure.
Okay. And if that is set, we'll move on to the next item, which is an update on the hiring of the administrative positions that we have open, so.
So so far, we have thirty-seven applications for high school APAD and thirteen for the director of student services. Uh, administrative team is meeting Wednesday to screen for both. Um, and select six candidates for each position to interview and, um, interviews for the high school APAD right now are April first and second. And interviews for the director of student services, April sixth and seventh. We've got two committees. We've got about sixteen, I think, on each committee. Breaking into two committees, we'll do the first round of interviews, then invite back two or three for the following week with just the admin team to make our final decision and recommend, uh, to the board, hopefully a candidate for each position by April twentieth. But yeah, I mean, it's, I'm really pleased with the amount of applications. Those are good numbers for those positions.
Looking over the applications, you get a pretty good feeling, I guess, as admins, that it looks like a good pool, a group of people?
Correct. Yep.
Good. Now, speaks highly of the reputation of the district that we've worked so hard to build, so.
Yeah, we don't get thirty-seven applications for most teaching positions.
Well, we'll look forward to, uh, hearing that. Admin recommendations, then, so. Other comments from board members?
Yeah.
Well, it wasn't on agenda, but I'm sure you want an update, uh, uh, happenings this, this, this last week, so, um, as you know, it happened really fast. I mean, we had some brief conversations at admin level a couple of weeks prior, but just like, hey, you know, just, you know, let's start thinking about it, but it got real, very real, very fast. You know, it started with, when the NCAA cancels, you know, slumming his fans and they cancel, and the NBA cancels, and the basketball and all, with, you know, those tournaments get canceled right mid, in the middle, you're like, wow, this is happening really fast, so. Uh, through this whole process, felt really good, like we were just a step ahead, barely, but, um, a group of ten area superintendents met on Wednesday. Um, Patrick Goldson initiated that from New Richmond, said, hey, you know, I know we're gonna talk about this Friday, but I feel the way things are going, we should meet quicker, so. I offered to meet, I offered to host, cause we're more of a central location, and, uh, ten of us got together here, talked about what we're thinking, you know, all the what ifs and what are you gonna do? And then we had a nice conference call with two folks from the depart- Wisconsin Department of Health Services and, uh, Polk County, a head of, uh, uh, public health, Pierce County and St. Creek County. So lots of good, relevant, timely information. And that, they were much like us, just like, you know, here's what we know, there's a lot of things we don't know, we're waiting, we're waiting, we'll let you know, and and it's good, we reiterated, like, we are leaning on you, we're, we're school superintendents, right? We're not health experts. We are leaning on you for the best and most relevant advice. Please, 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 um, I wanna emphasize, you know, that please empathize with us, like, we need to communicate with people, but we need the most recent information. Just make sure you communicate with us, and they have done an outstanding job in, you know, or what, five days since then. Um, so it started Wednesday and then Thursday. Let me have a look at my calendar, this happens so fast, it all blends in. Thursday, we had another conference call with, uh, superintendents talking about what's next. Uh, and then, uh, we had an admin, our first admin meeting devoted to that, and Thursday, Friday, had a CISA PAC meeting with, uh, the superintendents were that, were not there, I think a dozen joined virtually, so every superintendent was either there virtually or in person. Getting the most recent information, we asked Brian Kazmarsky, who's the, um, public health, uh, director in Polk County, and he's also the regional director. So we've leaned on him, he's been amazing. They've all been amazing, but Brian's kinda taken the lead on that as far as being the voice. Um, so he was there, he agreed to come, sat there and answered all our questions candidly, honestly. You know, he had to do his best, guess, too, and I give him credit, he went on a limb and, and he said, you know, if it was up to me, I'd, I'd, I'd cancel school, cause we're like, you know, it would help if you say, cancel school rather than us making all our independent decisions, and they said, you know, we get a lot of criticism about snow days, let alone something like this, so. So it was up to me, and we're like, well, then would you please advocate? We all agree with you. And I mean, it was, that was in the morning and it happened, you know, by five o'clock, so I'm, I'm guessing he and his other colleagues were doing the same thing and advocating for that. Um, so when the governor's order came out, well, then the admin, we met again Friday afternoon when I got back from the meeting. Um, and had a lot of the, the plans, but once five o'clock hit, you know, obviously, and the governor's order came out, that made it real, right? Right? It's happening, we know when and, and exactly most of the what. So then, uh, we met here, uh, like I said, that large group of people, twenty-some people. We had, um, we, well, we had Greg with the buildings and grounds, we had the whole admin team, we had Andrea and Kim with the backpack program, Tammy Simonson with, uh, uh, food service, district office, Jen, Pam, uh, Lane, um, Larry and Greg were there for building the grounds.
Chad.
Chad and Dan with IT, so I, I mean, just kinda had everybody's voice from how, how are we gonna pay people, payroll options to everything, to the tran- oh, Brian Peterson, the transportation. Um, you know, and Brian and Tammy, their role with delivering these meals has just been amazing. Brian, you know, uh, the list, so Dan developed that Google form, sent it out in that list, and we've got ninety-some families as of three hours ago now, is last time I looked, hundred and eighty or hundred and ninety students already, uh, we know are gonna get fed. Um, and the, and dr- and delivering those meals to the doorstep, got other Google forms going out for, there's, I don't know, there was forty-five within the first hour of our staff that signed up, said, hey, we could use your help perhaps for cleaning, could use your help for delivering meals, we could use your help for bagging meal. It just puts some categories and, I mean.
They're filled.
Filled, I mean, too many. And I even sent an email, said, we might get more than we need. Don't, don't take offense if you are, you know, selected. Filled, I mean, too many, and I even sent an email, said, we might get more than we need, don't don't take offense if you are, you know, selected, um, and sure enough. Um, I'm kinda all over the place, so going back to Saturday, that was really, really productive meeting and we walked out of here with the two messages for the staff and the community. We knew at that time and are a really solid plan, and I wanna say throughout this, all the superintendents have been collaborating. Plans are similar, but a little different, um, but we really felt strongly about, we need a planning day, really, you know, just to get ready. And then bring them in, give them all the materials they need, I I just think between bringing on all the voices, really made one good. Solid plan and message, and I just can't say enough um about the staff here and in our community as well, reaching out and wanting to help, so. Um, brought it, uh, the whole staff together then uh this morning for a meeting, just to do kind of a, you know, uh. You know, uh, win one for the Gipper speech and just uh tell everybody, we we uh, we don't, you know, we don't have all the answers. You do your best and it's gonna be all right, and uh then the work throughout the day just confirmed everything. Feel really, really good and not, I'll tell you what, the 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 few questions or negative comments are very few. You know, and I answer them, I give them the rationale behind it and and they appreciate that correspondence, the majority of the correspondence has been entirely positive. So this really is a, um, like I said, a defining moment, I think, we've got history with something like this with our community and staff rallying, Panther Camp in two thousand thirteen. Um, this, um, you know, lessons learned, I think everybody's, you know, using those lessons learned, feels a little different. Feels like we're a little more in control, right, and and uh. Even though there's so many unknowns, the the state and the local health departments continue to update us, even when the governor says, hey, fifty or. You know, it's like, okay, that order, if you read it, was confusing, because it did say, you know, it applies to public su- private schools and. He meant to say is gatherings at the public and private schools at fifty more, and the original order, which is clarified three or four times over now, it still stands. It's Wednesday at five o'clock, this didn't change that, it was just meant to add with some confusion, but. Uh, Thrill Share platform, we're used with text messaging, voice messaging and emails, live feed and Facebook has been a super convenient tool. You can just kinda put yourself in our chair, we're trying to get something out quick and 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 it's just, once I hit send, it's boom, it's just, that's it. And it's not that hard to do and make attachments and um, Facebook and live feed, um. Limit to two hundred and fifty characters, so we just obviously start linking documents and figure that out real quick, but used Thrill Share a ton, it's been a wonderful communication tool. Um, I feel like I'm forgetting something.
Can you talk about what the education plan looks like, what's what's, so tomorrow, students gonna go home and. What's our expectations or what are we asking of families and students?
Yeah, so first of all, obviously, right, again, the board and and the direction, look forward thinking, if we didn't have Chromebooks, this would be a completely different conversation. Far less effective, but five years ago, I think it was, six Chromebooks, right, so that's that helps and everything was in place for something like this, so. You know, students currently uh in grades six through twelve have their own Chromebooks that they can take home, bring back to school. We ask to keep them in uh third, fourth and fifth grade, uh, they stay in the classrooms in carts, so Dad and Chad quickly did a, you know, audible. Got them ready with their chargers to go, so we're sending them home with the kids tomorrow, so the reason we had to be, we wanted to meet tomorrow was to. Um, get students all their Chromebooks and make sure they, you know, have their materials, their textbooks, their notebooks, their personal belongings. Um, uh, get everything they're gonna need to continue their education here and then meet once more with teachers just to clarify any. Anything and work out the details, um, so that's gonna look a little more online, obviously, mostly online. With the grades three through twelve, um, again, it's a little different between middle and high school, but allowing uh access to our virtual. Um, to our Google Meet, where they can just have live video interactive sessions, opening that up, which we haven't before, is kind of a safety thing, but now it's. A necessity, can still monitor it, they're still filtered, so I know.
Meeting with each other as students or meeting with their teacher?
Only with their teacher, like, we didn't open it wide up where we could just start having our own little videos, again, trying to be safe. It's needed between the student and the teacher, so from my understanding, it's just between the student and teacher, the teacher sets it, they can join the meeting. Um, and that's, like, I know I've got two emails from um Trey's high school teachers already explaining all this stuff and formats. And 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 uh they're working that out, what it looks like in 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 K three, I'm not as um involved in, I didn't get into that level. When they went their separate ways, today, middle school's similar, I don't know, anybody have any more information to share?
So we we did, um, we spent the afternoon kinda going over the Google Meet platform, Hangout Meet is what it's called now. Um, basically, what high school teachers are doing is they're, so there's so many different curricular areas, um, they're focusing on not going backwards with content. So really solidifying what content they've already, at least through April sixth, um, and that's the plan currently. Um, it allows, it's a platform that allows all the students, up to a hundred and fifty students to join a class session. Uh, so it's teacher interacting with a hundred, up to a hundred and fifty students at one time, um, where they can deliver either a lesson. Um, or go over content, uh, or have interaction with student and teachers, so in large group form. The teacher has the opportunity to mute certain individuals if they want, um, chat, there's live chat features, uh, we're trying to do it within an office hour setting. Um, so the teachers are, they have, we developed a whole Google Calendar where the teachers are plopping in, using their Google Classroom. Um, times that they're gonna be available to connect with students, um, they will be recording every session that they uh have. So that way, it's archived and documented, um, so we're covering ourselves that way, um, but this will be a, it'll be a new adventure.
So is the student doing self-directed learning or do they have math class at nine o'clock now and they're gonna have math class at nine o'clock, starting on Wednesday?
It'll be a little more flexible, it'll be more, at the high school at least, it'll be more self-managed, where we'll provide the content for them. Um, and then the office hours will be kind of, yeah, it'll be directed by a teacher, it'll, the student's gonna have to join the meeting to get.
So the math teacher says, I'll be talking about algebra two from ten until eleven.
Correct, well, we were covering this content, um, they'll be putting resources on Google Classroom as much as they can. Uh, but this is a world we haven't technically dealt with in this capacity before, so we had this afternoon to kinda go over what it's gonna look like. Uh, it's gonna be a lot of trial and error as we go.
So in theory, a kid could pull up a lecture or a, and watch it again or.
Correct, yep.
Retrieve.
We'll do it at eight o'clock at night if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, so they'll be recording the live session and then they'll re- be reposting that on on Google Classroom, so that students have access to it. They'll be PDFing all the, any hard copies or any like excerpts they need to read or different things, we're really trying to focus on. Minimizing the amount or workload, because their environment's gonna change, right, some will be taking care of siblings, different things, their lifestyle's gonna change. So we're really focused on informative type, a lot of feedback, a lot of interaction, um, less heavy assessments of large projects. So we're trying to really, you know, dial it down a little bit for them and maintain our our path forward.
And how are we um helping kids with no connectivity?
So we sent out um tomorrow morning, um, I I recorded a video myself in first hour and then I'm gonna post it on. Uh, Google Classroom, we'll send it out via email and different things as well.
Tomorrow at school.
Tomorrow at school, um, we're gonna have a Google Form that all students are gonna fill out onsite. Uh, listing whether they have connection or not, um, and then what that looks like at home, so describing what they have access to a hotspot or location they can go to. Um, and then we're gonna compile a list and hopefully, there's some long-range things as far as like getting Verizon to deliver hotspots, there's different things we can do. Um, providing as many resources as possible, because in reality, if libraries and things shut down, there's gonna be very limited opportunities.
That's what's gonna happen, right?
Well, well, there's a couple of options that, we've had offers from across other churches to offer their wireless connectivity. Uh, the li- Hazel Mack and Library and Roberts, my understanding right now, they're of the opinion that. If the schools are not in operation, neither are they, I think we could probably talk with them. Try and convince them to run their regular hours, uh, at least to get our students an opportunity to go to the library or wireless.
We're gonna have to get things out via, I mean, Tim's done a nice job with multiple layer communication, so whether it's phone call, text. If they're not connected, they're not gonna get our emails, so, so finding multiple ways to communicate where these spots are.
Yeah.
Where they can get connectivity, otherwise delivering hard copies, you know.
No, hot, hot, the hotspots, are they gonna be, if we could get those, I know there's a lot of the technology companies that are offering. Free wireless through the, to get us through this crisis, but. Do they require extra equipment to do so or can they do that right off their towers?
I don't know, that's a discussion that we brought up.
And another question for the students is, even if you had, if you don't have connectivity, but if you had a hotspot. Do you have coverage at your house, because that's not a guarantee either?
Those will be questions that we'll run into and have to navigate as we go, with the short, as Tim mentioned, you know, the amount of, you know. Time we've had is very limited, so we've been, honestly, we've had a lot of great brainstorming, a lot of innovation in a short amount of time and these will things. These will be things that we'll have to work through as we get into it, because we don't have a platform like college campuses do with Canvas or, you know, different locations for kids. We're not set up for that, so we're kinda making it as we go, and uh the teachers have been really awesome, they were, they were. They worked really hard today, trying to get things ready.
Even with Canvas, I use, I use Google Meets for my office hours, my online office hours, it's a really good platform, so.
Yeah, I think tomorrow, you're gonna know, well, we've got this ninety percent of the kids covered and we know the ten percent that aren't, and then it's just. How do you take those in stride and solve them one or ten at a time?
Leverage those willing partners and.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, yeah, if spring break maybe helps, not sure, but um. A scheduled time off anyway, but, you know, people ask, my, I mean, my best guess, right, if my best guess is, it's it's greater odds that. It's gonna extend beyond April sixth than than that, in my opinion, this, but, because of, you know, we'll have, we'll know a heck of a lot more. By Thursday.
I'm on a national response team at work and we're seeing some states have already declared four weeks. There's one talking about the end of April, certainly college campuses are talking about suspending semesters or doing only online through semesters.
Most are only online, yeah.
Yeah, the only online.
U of M is only online.
So I I think that it's gonna, all those that say they're reassessing on March twenty seventh and April sixth, I think. Um, we're seeing indications, it's gonna go long there.
We're pressing the DPI and stuff to have, you know, decisions made on required hour minutes of instruction and even was talk about that might have happened yet today, but. Appears it's not going to, I think they're kind of awaiting C two, how long this goes.
So are, so are we able to track student progress, do we know the students that are participating, are we? So that we just kinda know where sh- sh- students are at, because I I think that even just kinda helps with the. Not even just from the educational perspective, but it just kinda, it it extends out for. There's someone out there that cares about me that I can connect with, you know.
And we can't let anyone fall through the cracks.
Right, exactly, so that 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 we don't get kids feeling isolated or alone, you know, one of, one of the concerns that we've talked about in my house. Is that, you know, introverts are jumping up and down, they're all happy about it, I've got two at home that can't wait to dig into books, well, that's great. But there's others that it may be a fearful time for them too, and what are we doing about making sure that they have a connecting point? And we are watching the mental wellbeing, especially if it gets to be two and three and four plus weeks.
Those are all good discussions we had, I mean, in three letters that went home in each school today, talked about it, they're gonna not just communicate with the kids, communicate with the parents as well. You know, and I, how they're monitoring exactly, I don't have that level of detail at this point, it's gonna look differently, I'm hundred percent confident that there's a plan for that. Though, in each building, I know that's been talked about, talked about, um.
And how do we do it in virtual?
It's a different platform, that where there's progress monitoring and tracking per class, again, we're hard, the way we're set up is not meant to do that.
Right.
I mean, equity, there's lots of equity issues, right, not just have, whether you have internet or not, it's, there's, you know, uh, we can't provide a lot of ser-. You know, it's makes it more challenging for mental health and things like that, and students that are at risk and need structure better and and peer support and. Um, special education, right, it's, you know, uh, again, they say if you offer, you know, an education to regular students, you need to offer that. Same to uh special education students, so there is, I know we could do compensatory pro- uh compensatory um services. Make it up, what basically that means, at a later date, you know, we're just, like I said, there's, we don't have all the answers, but we are at least discussing and we know. The questions, we don't have the answers to.
This is where trend trend communication, having each other's back, and you know, one of the filters we're using is. Are you willing to stand in front of the CEO's desk and say, I made this trace and, you know, it was responsible, rational, prudent decision? And we work with professionals, we work with professional educators and I think that, you know, we have to place. Our faith and confidence in those that have been just doing amazing work for us and who has entered these types of challenges before. And then how do we keep the right networks of support in alignment to enable them to just go work with the students best they can in this situation? And I I really admire, you know, Tim, I know I texted you, um, but I just really admire the planning, the thoughtfulness. The readiness, and it's this balance between, we have a strategy, there's a tactical execution of it, and there's a. Concern component of it, and I think that you as a team are just nailing all three of those.
Thank you, yeah. Um, Brian and Melanie, curious, right, uh, everybody in here has been kinda inside and communicating out, you know, what what is it looking like? From from your end?
Couple of questions on the delivery method, um, so we just did a large test at work and we found out that we're VPN limited. When we were doing live feeds, so we were only allowed, we can only have six hundred or seven hundred at a time if they're doing V- if they're VPN again. At some level of a high-level user, so like a live V video, that would actually take our network down and paperwork. And uh it's like three point eight million dollars to increase that, so we've come up with a two-tiered structure, high level of required data. And then if you're able to work from home and you're kind of family, so some things that they've done is uh jump drives. So we actually had a bunch of jump drives available, so we wouldn't have to VPN, so we could take a bunch of stuff off the server, put it on our jump drive, transfer it to a OneDrive. Use Microsoft Office three sixty-five to do it, um, I don't know, just like when you're talking those videos and people can't get internet, maybe some jump drives would be. An option to deliver it to the Chromebook, because sometimes it's hard to deliver the material to the Chromebooks, just, just a thought, right, if you're only talking fifty. They have a lot of capacity, maybe that's something.
I know, so the VPNs, I I I'm not, I don't, you're speaking a little foreign language to me, but I do know from talking to Chad, we have an incredible. The pipeline, and they all goes in and out, is way more than we need, it's one.
Terabyte.
Terabyte, I don't know, one whatever, that's a lot, whatever one is, he says, we're good with that, but I don't know if we're talking the same thing. Kinda like voltage and watts.
We started doing both directions, ran into trouble.
Okay.
So I just, maybe it'll be fine, it would just be. It's like more than just asking.
Okay.
I can tell you that Bryn will be disappointed because it goes down to third grade now, because she thought you was, you thought the cutoff was fifth grade. From the communication previously, so that's good, um, it'll give her something to do, um, keep her occupied, not fighting with her sister. But I think communication has been great, though, honestly, like, it's right on top of it compared to other schools, so I was at work beginning of the day doing our planning and. People don't have nearly as much information as we do, right, so you get the text, you get the voicemail, you get the emails, there's stuff out on Facebook, there's a lot of different ideas you're delivering. And I think it's, I think it's good, um, from that perspective, we don't learn a lot, right, it's gonna change the world, it's gonna change our culture, it's gonna change a lot of things here. We don't have all the answers, but I, John's saying that then, if you wanna meet at that, on a date, it would not be April sixth, that makes sense.
Well, CDC recommendations are forty-eight weeks, so.
Yeah, I was looking at their graphs.
The health expert told, I I think I might even put that in one of my correspondence, thirty days, because to run two cycles is the best, but.
The communication piece, I know for us has been good, you know, we've got five students in the district and, you know, if we're at home. The home phone rings, two cell phones ringing, emails go off on both cell phones, and the text messages off, the house just.
It's Tim.
I thought you were like.
We know it's the district, but I mean, we've been receiving a lot of it, so I know with kids in the district, and we've been getting a lot of that stuff regularly.
Thinking that's some feedback from a couple of people about, you know, not everybody checks through email or not everybody necessarily even. You know, has internet, but pretty much everybody's got a cellphone, you know, so the voicemail and the text covers that part too.
And then you tell them to check the text or the email.
Well, and it's, it's a lot easier, I guess, it's apparent with so many students in the district, it's a lot easier for me to just swipe on something I've already read. Nope, I already read one of those, I already do that again, just delete it, I would rather do that than miss out on the information. So, I mean, I don't mind the multiple forms of communication for me personally. The voicemails, the emails, the text messages, whatever, because it's all giving me the same stuff, and if I start to read it, okay, I already read this, I'm good, but at least I know I got it.
In our theories, our communication might not be perfect, but timely is really important, because otherwise people start filling in blanks with misinformation and, yeah.
Our plan for potentially underserved groups is probably gonna be the toughest, the most fluid plan in my, in my estimation. You know, the, the kids who don't have connectivity or have a um. Disjointed home life because of this going on at their parents' work, and, you know. This whole thing is gonna throw some kids into a tougher spot than others. And we have to make sure that we're on top of how we're gonna best serve those kids.
Yeah, we, like I said, the transportation thing's a game changer, you know, we could possibly. Pick up kids and bring them to us in small groups, somewhere, you know, uh, or go, we even on Friday, we're already talking about our at-risk kids. That might need check-ins and just uh, home visits with, you know, more, two or more people, just, you know, maybe partner out and go and just check in, how's it going? Especially if it gets extended.
Right, part of the lunch route or the transportation piece might be delivering some drives to, to kids that have. A higher volume or, or a slower speed, they can do this, but they can't do that. So that's a good suggestion, and we might already be driving by their house, so if we have it as part of our delivery system. Or we make it another route, whatever, but.
Well, sitting in the meeting on Saturday morning here with the team. It was pretty impressive, uh, all the things, details they'd already had found it out, and the emphasis on the detail. To get the message out that was uh, clearly transmitted uh, to everybody, and that. The message was clear enough that there wouldn't be any ambiguities in the information. Spent a lot of time putting the uh, parent and staff letters together, and so. It's greatly appreciated, I wanna thank everybody that worked on that, that was a super job. I fall back on some of my EMS experience over the years, after being in the service, that service for over twenty years. You deal with what you have at hand, you can't deal with extraneous stuff. You keep your focus on what you know and what you can do, and we did that, and we will continue to do that. And as things change, uh, we'll keep up with it as best we can, but. It went well, and I wanna thank everybody that participated in that meeting, uh, it was wonderful, so, thank you.
Have a FAQ sheet done, and we're, uh, pre-class questions, one with three main themes, delivery of, of instructional materials, what happens if. You can't be in school or choose not to be in school tomorrow, then we're gonna have a pickup day Wednesday, and then we're gonna deliver it if we have to, so. That's one about that, I'll talk about food service, some more questions and details, our food service thing, that's, there's uh, FAQ, that's another theme. And then the last one is technology, what happens if I have IT problems, um, so Chad and Dan worked on that piece, so. That'll go out tomorrow, tomorrow morning again, but there probably will be correspondence about every day here, up through spring break at least.
And, and beyond, I think, even if you don't have much to say, saying there's nothing new is a, a good answer to a parent. That's wondering what's going on.
Yeah, nothing extra.
No news, no, a no news report is better than uh.
Than no news.
Yeah, a lot of us have more time now, it's like, like trips are canceled and, you know.
So how can we, um. Are there things that should need from us as a board specifically, uh, because, or is this, we let. We let you go do what you do best, which is educating children and responding, and uh, you will call us in for advice and guidance? Governance if necessary?
Yep, yep, I feel comfortable, um, with the way things are going, just as they are, um, and I'm trying to keep you updated. As well, you know, you know, I don't know exactly who's on what, you know, send an email with the latest guidance, but, um, no, just your uh. Feedback again from say, hey, you know, you got a few things on what you're hearing, you know, being the. Eyes and ears of the community, if there's something we can do better, please let us know, but as far as the details, yeah, I feel really good about. Administrative details that, that the whole team has put together.
You know, this cast, Stephanie, is virtual school business as usual?
And a few more calls.
I, I was wondering if we were gonna get a spike?
Um, not huge, so I think it speaks to what we are doing and what other local districts are offering to their kids. I don't know if it will continue like that if the break extends, um, but we have had probably five to eight calls in the last couple days.
And our current students enrolled will continue to do their virtual online work as is.
As usual.
They cannot come into the school and have that auxiliary support.
Yep, so we communicated that this weekend to all of them, with their teachers, if you, they will buy a phone, buy their online platform, right in your house.
And then are, are teachers reporting to the building daily?
That's a good question, so they are, uh, you know, encouraged to do everything they can from home, they are welcome to come into their workstations. To, you know, for any work-related things, but work-related only, you know, not working out, not bringing your kids into the gym, it's strictly off limits. Only open to work-related things in your workspace, because we have custodians doing a very thorough cleaning. That would defeat that purpose, um, but yeah, it's, we're not mandating you can't come in, we're not mandating you have to come in, it's again, professional trust.
This question to, to you, Jen, is financial impact on the budget, are we? Negative, are we neutral?
I, I'm a little worried about that, depending on what we may have to do, um, to make this, get this all up and running. But as far as I've heard so far, there aren't any huge costs associated with it, that we've had. All of the devices in stock already within the district and just repurposing them in that way, um. There could be a savings, depending on how long it goes on, just for not having to have substitute teachers in when we have staff out. So that type of thing would be one thing to look at, so, you know, we're gonna be planning by year and see what comes up, and. If there is some kind of large expense that comes up so that we continue, can continue to educate the students. Of course, we'll keep, keep you guys up to date with that.
Well, we'll have to do what we have to do.
Has the state asked for an accounting of. Exceptional expenses?
Not as of this point.
At some, we, we should make it fully visible to them if there, if there are. Because I have a feeling that there's gonna be some budget money allocated to take care of extraordinary expenses for districts, so.
So far it's budget neutral, I guess we should ask, um, that, you know, our, our administrative decision, we told employees we were gonna pay. Everybody their normal, you know, just as if they were working, um, we made that decision early, um, but just wanted to make sure.
I think that was also the governor's position, right, and the DPI's position.
Yeah.
And I've heard from several, and that's a, an absolute relief, and what I've heard is, tell me what you need. I mean, tell me what you want me to do.
Well, we have opportunities for our employees to step up if they so choose, I think that the feedback I've seen also is. The feedback, at least on the Head Start program, is federal government has agreed that employees should be paid for this time off, so.
What are we doing to, you know, we have kids who are at risk, and what are we doing about. Mental health of kids that we don't see every day anymore? How do we keep track of that?
Are we doing house calls?
Well, that's what I referred to earlier about, uh, we talked about doing house calls, but how do we know? We don't know until they just, we just do check-ins, we talked about checking.
But, my understanding is that in each building, we kind of have a list, and make sure every kid has some point of connection, is that gonna continue? When they're at home, or how do we make sure that, you know, kids don't get lost?
Yeah, I know it's been discussed, I don't know if we have a concrete plan yet, today's focus was.
Make sure it's on the list.
Yeah, we.
Cause this is scary times for families, and it's just an emotional roller coaster. Kids are no exception, so, and I would say the same thing for our staff.
Jason's got some.
Some things we talked about today with the staff was when we're doing these like, um, cool hangout meet things, that we're still mandatory reporters, so if we're seeing kids. Live virtually, we can see how they're acting still, um, so, some behavioral recognition type stuff. Um, we communicated out today that Family Therapy Associates is only doing phone call conversations, they're not gonna be with kids face to face. And that's just from Family Therapy Associates, um.
So those are still gonna happen?
Those will still happen, um, if the parents, you know, connect them on the phone, um, we also have the Gaggle platform, so now that. We're using more, um, more Google-type services, our, our filter system through Gaggle, which we get. Notifications and alerts based on what kids are writing, um, we get, that'll be bolstered, I'm sure, so we'll see a lot more, we can respond quickly to that. Cause people are actually, actually watching it, monitoring what they're doing.
And if, if we haven't, we should send out to parents that there, were, how to reach out to counselors and school sites and. And that sort of thing, and make, make them readily available.
Our counselors are planning on sending something out specifically to kids as well, as far as contact information, um, we're, we're gonna tell the students tomorrow too as well in person. That we're available to them twenty-four seven, and to email or, or call these numbers or whatever.
Good. Anybody think? Are there any other questions or doubts to school update?
Nice job.
Yeah, thanks everyone for all the work on that.
Try and stay on top of it, so, work has just begun. Okay, uh, next.
Real, yeah, just look real quick, we have already sixty-seven staff responses, sixty-seven people willing to help out, and for meals, we have one hundred and one families. Uh, ranging from a hundred and eighty-six to a hundred and ninety-seven meals per day. And we have until.
That's powerful.
Have until tomorrow for the first delivery, um, which will go out Wednesday morning.
Anything else?
And do you have a way of, if we know the free and reduced lunch list, is that basically that list?
Well, we could reference it, but you don't have, no, anyone qualifies, it's like the summer school program.
My point is that if some of those kids that are free and reduced aren't on the list, we better make sure. Somebody reaches out to them personally to make sure they.
We haven't got that far, we did cross-reference with the backpack program though, which is also going out, I should, I forgot to mention, the backpack program is still continuing as well. Getting delivered. Free introduced, yeah, that's, that would be a good next step, okay?
Okay, another question, the comments, might as well move on. Our next scheduled, scheduled speaker is Mr. Bill Emery, uh, to discuss support for the outdoor adventure class, so.
Live outside, the air is clean.
Well, I was thinking here while you guys are talking, I was actually thinking this a little trouble, maybe I should just take the group up north, it's needed.
As long as it's not ten or more.
Well, I can tell you, they slept in our cabin up north, and they slept so soundly that when the snow slid off the roof and took the chimney down, it, they didn't even hear it. Bill says, what's a cabin?
Exactly.
What's a chimney?
I do have a, a slideshow going, um, I'll probably talk about a few of the slides. It's moving a little fast than I'd like, so I didn't kind of, well, but I'll go through it more than once. This is called social distancing. We appreciate that. That's right, I, I won't touch my face and I'll wash my hands. So, um, a little bit about why I'm here, um, I'm, uh. I've been teaching a outdoor adventures class for a while, um, three years, this is my third year, um, it's. Last time I was here talking about it, you asked that I push it hard enough that I get everybody, um, and right now I'm teaching. Forty-six kids in a, in a year, that's about a third of, of the school, we'll get it that way, um. If I keep that up, so I'm, I'm trying, we're getting more, um. The point on why I'm here tonight is a little bit about. Um, is a, a little bit about needing some help, um, I, uh, I'm taking. Thirty-six kids or thirty-six people to the Boundary Waters this, this summer, and. Um, if I do that, I need at least ten canoes to go, um. And if I rented ten canoes, that's gonna be about a hundred and fifty dollars a piece to rent. Times ten, that's fifteen hundred dollars in one expense to go, um, and so I'm, I'm looking for other options in terms of doing that. Uh, the way I've been doing it so far is I've been begging my neighbors to borrow their canoes, um, and the church has. Had six, but they're down to four because I took six and two of them leaked pretty bad, uh, so I think they were bailing fast and then they were paddling. Um, so it's a matter of, um, needing, needing some help, um. On the proposal that I handed out, I talked a little bit about what I've been up to, um. I, uh, found some canoes, actually, uh, because my cross-country team goes on the triathlon, and we go tubing down the Cannon River. Um, I met up with the guy that runs the tubing facility on the Cannon, which is Welch Mill. And he had a whole stack of canoes, and I started to drool, so I asked him about it, and he said, well, I. Usually fix up one or two a winter and I sell them off, and I said, how about ten? And then I kind of worked with them a little bit, and he came up with a, he came up with a deal, um, I could get ten canoes for a hundred dollars a piece. Um, if he also wrote, if we also wrote him a letter saying he donated two hundred extra dollars a piece, because of. The actual cost with those would go with those, so he's willing to do that, um, I was pretty excited about that. I, uh, went canoeing this summer, um, with a, a couple of. Couple of students that didn't make the spring trip or the early summer trip, um, and while I was canoeing, uh, on the Nanakogon this summer. I ran across the vice president in terms of projects, um, from bending branches, um. I guess he's friends with the malls too, so I think they got connections everywhere, um, and, uh. Uh, he lined me up and, uh, we can get a supreme deal with bending branches, getting new pedals for that. Um, so I'm pretty excited about the possibilities for that, so my, my need, my help is, in order for me to take kids on trips. Um, similar to Chelsea there, Chelsea is, uh. Graduated quite a few years ago, she's a mother of two now, and she ran across me at a local facility. And started jabbering to me about, um, her time at the Boundary Waters, and I bragged to her that I use her picture all the time. Um, to promote it, maybe you know Chelsea, maybe you don't, um, but, uh. The program means a lot, and it means a lot to the kids that, even those that can't afford to, to go, and I. I make it as cheap as humanly possible to go on these trips, if you can go on the, you can go on a Boundary Waters trip around sixty dollars. And my student teacher, I have a quite gifted student teacher this sem. And, uh, my student teacher, I have a quite gifted student teacher this semester. Before he came to me, he was a guide in the Boundary Waters. And he said, that's a three hundred dollars trip on the low end if you were doing it. Just, just supplying them the stuff. And yes, you're right, sixty dollars is well done. And, uh, it helps that I get transportation from the school. It helps that I supply everybody with everything they need. If they don't find themselves, it helps, um, that we take cheat meals and don't go fancy. It, it, it all helps. But the canoes are gonna catch us cause I'm starting to run out of services and I don't wanna have to replace my neighbor's canoes if we do bust through them. So I'm needing some help and that's why. Now, one of the questions that came up when I was talking to Mr. Soderberg about that is are there any other options? And could you write a grant? And I did write a grant already. Uh, last year I got a grant for cross-country skis. Ran across Mr. Redman up at, uh, Midwest Mountain hearing. I was all happy. You probably saw me bouncing off the walls happy because I was going up there to buy skis. My story got better as I got there. I don't know if you saw that, but. I went to go buy skis. I had the school credit card and I'm going, yes, I get to buy ten. And I got there and I said, uh, the guy obviously saw the look on my face. He says, can I help you? I said, yes, I'm here to buy skis and I gave him the story. And he goes, put your card away. Here's mine. Call me later. He was the, um, manufacturer rep for Mathus, which is a ski company. And he's going to give me lower than wholesale cost, the cost for boots and bindings. So I'm not getting ten, I'm getting thirty. Uh, so I'm really happy about that. So some good things are happening in there. But I don't know if, I, I tried another one with the Saint Croix Foundation and they haven't been generous to me. I haven't three-striked out yet, but I'm going for my third, so we'll see what happens for that. I wrote another one for snowshoes, um, because there's a, right now I'm using the elementary kids' snowshoes. They don't always work so well for the six-five guy. I haven't had luck with that yet either, so, um, that's why.
I need a pair about this week.
Right.
So what do we have? Do we have a, a, a line on, uh, I know there's always this year-end budget true of Jen. And sometimes there's dollars that will allocate at the very end of the year. Are we getting a directional sense of what that budget may be or not yet?
I think it's not yet, depending on how all of this goes with the shutdown.
Yeah.
When do we have to make a decision to pull the trigger on this bill?
I'd kinda like to pick up the canoes before June, um, fifth. So sometime in May would be good.
Okay.
So Anne Marie allows us a quarterly, I mean, a grant, you know, the Anne Marie Foundation.
She's the one I got the two thousand off for cross-country.
Yeah.
She's pretty.
But we can do that quarterly. So I don't think we have any plans that I'm aware of. I haven't seen one for the, this next quarter. Would be an option.
The other option was, uh, I, I didn't like it, um, was to have, uh, another organization buy them. And we rent them cheaper than what we could from someone else.
Bill, what's the, uh, gender mix of the forty-six students?
In my class this semester, um, I have four girls, the rest are boys. And that's twenty, twenty-one boys, four girls.
And for the forty-six?
That's, that's part of that. I had twenty in my, twenty in my first semester class. And there's, there were a few in there. There's still girls, but not as kind of.
I was just thinking that if we were greater than fifty percent, we may look at the Betty McLaughlin Fund. If that would be appropriate, but not with, not with this mix. Cause hers was specifically about enabling, uh, women athletics and, um, health.
Um, one of the neat things that's happening in the program, um, the girl is pictured here, um, in the far back. Her name's, uh, was Diana Granberg. It's now Diana Frederick. She, uh. She's gone on my trips. She's went on a winter camping trip. Uh, she's going on my summer trip. Uh, she's a nurse. So now I have medical staff on board, um, with the things that I'm doing. So I'm enjoying kids that are wanting to come back, uh, that are hoping that I stay in the program long enough. Like Chelsea, that her kids can do it. But I also have kids that have gone on it that are supporting me as generals. I think this is big.
Or I think that at some point we need to take this in. I mean, I would be open to looking at. Some of the end of year budget. I think that I like your idea about if we have an applied tandem, Marie Foundation quarterly. To redo the requests or, you know, do this quarter's request submitted. And then it sounds like we should be making a decision not later than that. Made board meeting. And I think that, uh, we also put out, you know. I've seen GoFundMe and other things, but, uh. If anyone's willing to make a donation to the high schools or to the schools specifically for this program, maybe a way to do it as well.
Interestingly enough, I just got one of those. Um, a lady called me a couple of weeks back and has donated boat. Motor, trailer, fishing equipment and all the other goods that go with it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if someone would give a hundred dollar gift to the school.
I, I, but I, I do get surprises once in a while, so that, that's nice.
And do you need a boat, motor, trailer and all that goes with it? Or do we turn around and? Know that and.
The whole point on the, on the gift was that I teach kids how to fish. And, uh, that, that is part of, uh, what I do in the class, so more than, more than happy to do this.
Can't take the boat and motor to the Boundary Waters.
Not that big of a motor. It's a seventy-five horse motor, so no.
I'd get you across some of them pretty quick.
Yeah. Portage is so large.
Turns a portage into a jumpage.
Question for the ten canoes. You have a trailer that will haul.
Um, that's part of the, the details in there, at least a little bit. We have a, a tandem axle trailer that, uh, is a car trailer. That I was hoping to not permanently modify, but be able to stack a rack on it. I've done it with a, one of my own trailers. So I personally own a six canoe trailer. That I took my old grandfather's trailer and put a rack I can put on or take off. And that's kind of what I'd like to do with that cart trailer is to do the same. Now, I did notice that Greg put some tires on it. So, um, it's a little bit more workable, but I, I'm guessing it needs more work yet. But that's part of what the additional. I do have access to a ten canoe trailer, but again, no, I'm still asking.
Okay. We might have to phase into the, when we get the first part of it and then. Phase into the trailer. For my trailer later, but. Let's, let's see what we can do. I think we can make it happen.
I'm just one last note. Uh, this is, um, the kid I took turkey hunting. That's the turkey he got last spring. Not saying anything.
No, he, he made me rubbing, rubbing it in. Other mentors weren't successful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's good stuff.
Okay. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our financial report from our treasurer.
Bank account balances as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Citizen state checking, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, forty-seven dollars, sixty-three cents. Citizen state money market, five hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, eighty-three cents. Citizens bank fund forty-six, fifty-two dollars, seventy-eight cents. Citizens bank money market suicide prevention fund, nineteen thousand, seventy-seven dollars, eighty-four cents. For total bank account balances of eight hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents.
A motion. David. Second John to accept the treasurer's report as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, next item is a consent agenda, which consists of approval of the meeting minutes for our February seventeenth meeting. Wage and benefit committee meeting on March second. Our SEC board learning meeting on March second. Approval of the bi-monthly bills for March twenty twenty. Approval of resignations and retirements of. Gene Jesky, uh, special ed paraprofessional, Lynn Goss. Middle school special ed paraprofessional. Laura Anderson, seven hours, uh, middle school special ed paraprofessional. Ty Kets is our full-time head girls' basketball coach. Peggy Snyder is our three-hour elementary assistant cook number two. Approval of, uh, there are no appointments or contract modifications at this time. Approval of curricular modification request for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual ed courses for the. Two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. And approval of the student participation in the early college credit, uh, program. The virtual, uh, student count was two part-time for, uh, two thousand, uh, nineteen, twenty. One part-time for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and one full-time for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for a total of four students. So. A motion to accept it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion, John, second David, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Move on to the next item, which is our student enrollment update.
All right, I just, uh, two noteworthy milestones I wanted to point out. First in the bottom left-hand corner, we now are over three hundred open enrolled in students, three oh nine to be exact. Versus one hundred and seven out from net in of two oh two. And then in our virtual charter school, we hit the milestone of two hundred. We are now at two hundred and one students. Well, now, now, as of this time of this report, we're at two hundred and one. More than that now.
Big deal.
Okay, any questions with regards to the, uh, student enrollment update?
I have a sense of how many of the virtual ed kids are open and roll.
How many of the?
Of the three oh nine?
Well, the, well, two hundred and one are for sure open enrolled in our charter school. You have to be open enrolled.
Oh, you can't be a district.
Right, so that's the virtual, uh, full-time, that other little graph there of twenty-nine. And full-time and sixty, part-time, those are our resident ki- kids. So they are part of the virtual school, but they're resident kids.
So two hundred and one kids are open and rolled.
Correct.
So the.
In the virtual charter, there's also.
The twenty-nine and the six.
One hundred and eight that are in our.
The twenty-nine and the six we call it in our in-seeds are called that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Wait.
Nope.
No.
Nope.
They don't.
Don't read the box above it. Virtual full-time.
Gotcha.
So they're not in the virtual charter and they're not in the in-seeds.
It's a Tuesday, Mercury's in retrograde.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other questions in regards to the student enrollment update?
At the wage and benefit. There was a question about whether. Some of the things we're invest, investing in for next year's budget. Rather than putting that money into teacher comp or employee comp. And I made the comment that we were investing in virtual ed because it's such an important part of our fiscal budget. I mean, it's two hundred and one students in. And that we were behind in investing in that, and so we were making an investment in the budget coming out. Didn't get too much pushback on it. I mean, they'd rather have money in their pocket, but. If you don't invest in keeping this relevant, then we won't have it. It'll just be gone. I mean, it could go.
And then there's a big hole in the budget.
Yeah. So. Uh, this is helpful information. Thank you.
Tim, when do you start getting numbers for projected four K for twenty twenty-one or kindergarten roundups and all that?
So we have that. Uh, I don't know if it's specifically in your budget report, but Jen built her budget. Using the mo- uh, most recent and relevant data that we have and then past history. But the actual, um, like four K, for instance, uh, signup hasn't happened yet.
Are we expecting a bigger in than graduating?
Yep, yep. Do you have those?
We're anticipating that we'll increase by nine FTE in our resident count.
And that's with all the calculations and with the graduating and all that.
Point six, no, point.
Point six for four K.
Yeah.
Yep.
And does that include that three-year rolling adjustment?
That's the, with the three-year rolling average, we would be up eight.
Eight total, nine, okay.
Eight FTE.
It's not time to be, we start asking this.
No, no, I meant.
We're, we're, we're down to the clerk. Right, so we're down to the clerk. So you're going on, Jeff Scott, you're next.
Student, staff, community recognition.
Absolutely.
Ain't even any water yet.
Sit back. We have lots of wonderful recognitions. Uh, to Ellie Frazier, Austin Albright, Max Larson and Brady O'Brien. These are the four students that we want to recognize for outstanding representation of Saint Christ Central. In their roles at the Phipps production of Little Mermaid and wishing them, um, to keep up their great work. Uh, to Melanie Newman. And Leah Tritz and Alicia Benzer. Thank you to these three for all you did to make the middle school play a huge success. The time and commitment put into this does not go unnoticed. To Donna Reed of Hudson, Wisconsin. Thank you for your generous donation of material and money for our blanket club. Your generosity will help us help others. To Thomas Lane, in recognition, congratulations on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. A job well done. To Isaiah Cassay, Isaiah, we want to recognize your great work as a basketball game P A announcer this season. You are pursuing your interests and finding ways to be the best possible you. Great job. To Morgan Seiler, congratulations on being recognized as an ACC conference member of the Middle Border Conference. And thank you for four years of dedication to the girls' basketball program. To Kobe June, congratulations on being recognized as an all-conference member of the Middle Border Conference. And four years of dedication to the girls' basketball program. To Gabe Seiler, recognition, congratulations on being recognized as a first-team all-conference basketball player of Middle Border Conference. To Jackson Pettit, recognition, congratulations on being recognized as a second-team all-conference basketball player of the Middle Border Conference. To Devon Wosley, recognition, congratulations on achieving individual state runner-up at the W I A A wrestling state tournament. We are proud of you and look forward to all the accomplishments, all the accomplishments you will have in the next few years. To Zach Holm, recognition, congratulations on being recognized as a first-team all-conference hockey player of the Middle Border. Conference. To Wyatt Sun B., Sun D B., uh, congratulations on being recognized as a first-team all-conference hockey player. Of Middle Border All-Conference. of Middle Border All-Conference. To Jacob Rosopolis, recognition, congratulations on being recognized as an all-conference member of the Middle Border Conference, and thank you for four years of dedication to the hockey program. To the Robert Slyng Club, Doreen Kruške, Chuck Pizzi, and Michael Auden, thank you for coming to the middle school and providing free vision screening, your generosity is greatly appreciated. And to Sean Conway, recognition, thank you for bringing members of the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare Band Program to work with our students. The opportunity to learn from outstanding musicians will have a powerful and lasting impact. Those are the board thank yous and recognitions for this one.
Thank you, and congratulations to all those, uh, mentioned. Recognition well deserved, so. Thank you, thanks to those that submitted, those are appreciated. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we are looking at, um, discussion of the future district needs and priorities, I think the last thing we left off with were the, um, RFPs for the communications. Where are we there, Jeff?
Yeah, so, um, next board meeting, April sixth, six o'clock start, so it's a special time. Uh, and the reason is we have two interviews lasting approximately forty-five minutes each, so Joe Donovan's at six and Doreen Dembski is at seven o'clock, and that will be ninety-five percent of the board meeting, the rest of things just consent to Jen.
Do we have anything, cause I probably won't be at the meeting, do we have anything in advance, or are they submitting anything?
Did I not forward that from Joe?
You get the one from Joe?
I didn't see it.
I don't.
I don't.
Did I just send it to you?
Okay.
I will have from both of them. Uh, did I send it to you just to say, hey, look at this, okay, I'm, we got sidetracked. So, uh, Joe did send it already, Doreen was going to prior to look at, so they're gonna do their presentation and then, you know, about fifteen, twenty minutes of questions and answers, uh, allow for, and about, you know, ten, fifteen-minute break in between.
There's some change over here, cause.
Things are changing.
Things are changing, right.
They can't cancel my bike trip, I gotta go.
Okay.
Pam, I'm still showing us a six-thirty start time on calendar, do you know if you've sent, uh, updated?
I don't think I did. I don't think I did.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have a six o'clock start on the sixth. Make sure we get all the notices out there, um, so everybody's aware. Any other questions or comments with regards to the, uh, discussion of the future needs of district?
Okay, I'll send the Joe Donovan folder right now.
Okay, then moving on to the next agenda item, consideration of approval of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CISA Shared Services Contract. I believe you all received a copy of the summary sheet from Jen.
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments there, any highlights you wanna point out, Tim?
Almost the same exact as last year, uh, minus, uh, one more district-level consulting day, three to four there in the front page. Um, and then last year, we, we did not sign up for Simotech and, um, we thought we would try it individually and, uh, based on our user rate, we're better off, uh, signing back up for the full package. Uh, come out ahead and then some, it prohibited us from certain things, like using the Star Lab, we didn't realize, so. Uh, we're back to by signing up for the Simotech services, which we had done for years. And there's always, as you can see, a slight increase in, in some of the other services, um, obviously their budget, their, um, have to estimate, was it three percent, Jen?
Some of them I did estimate three percent, um, others, they had already estimated for us, like the administration and my.
Yeah, okay.
I have approval of the shared, CISA eleventh shared services contract.
A motion, Jeff's second, Scott to approve the CISA, uh, eleventh shared services contract as presented, and further discussion?
Tim, do you just do a, like, an administrative, uh, kind of a self-assurance audit, that you know that you're using these and that you feel that the dollar value that we're spending is equal or better than, or, you know, the services we're receiving are equal or better than the dollars that we're spending?
Yep, and they do a nice report, they show you exactly, right, right, uh, chronological, yep, and who exactly went to it, how much it costs, yeah, so we'll see if we use it, they have a nice catalog that explains every, uh, service, and then we go down line by line. Renew, drop, or purchase, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, the next item is consideration of approval of short-term borrowing.
So, as we have had through the last couple of years, we are borrowing again in March. We have accounts payable from tonight that will go out tomorrow morning, and then we also have a payroll on Friday. So, we will need the six hundred thousand to make it so that we can meet those obligations this week. We receive our state aid on the twenty-third, next Monday. So, again, just one week, anticipating cost right around four hundred dollars, maybe a little bit less.
So, the, while the maturity says June sixteenth, you'll pay it off in a week or two days?
Yeah, we'll pay it off on the twenty-third of March.
You need a motion on that?
Yes.
Second?
A motion, David, second John, to approve, uh, the borrowing of the six hundred thousand on short-term borrowing. This was authorized, uh, through the annual meeting, so.
Did you bring copies for us this morning?
Yeah.
Right here.
So.
Here.
Okay. Sure. Okay.
You have a motion, a second, that has been brought.
Yes, we, uh, there, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the contract for lawn services for summer of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, two-year term. Okay.
So we had a little bit of a change, um, because last fall, we started contracting for services at the high school for the athletic fields. So we included that in the bidding process when we went out for bids this year. Um, we were requesting a three-year bid, so it will be summer of twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And you can see that we received four, um, bids back from four different providers. Some of them were unable to provide the services that we were requesting at the high school for the athletic fields. Um, Tim, I, Greg, and Larry sat down and looked at all of them, and we decided that we really wanted to give the contract to one vendor, um, just for ease of facilitating all of the communication piece between us and the vendor. Um, so our recommend base, our recommendation is to go with Fern's Lawn Care. They have said that they will throw in the roundup applications for free if we give them all of the different buildings and the athletic fields. So the actual total cost would be slightly less than twenty-five thousand.
We're rounding up the fence, fence lines and the infield, if we, it's dirt infield.
As long as it's not the lines on the practice field. Okay.
We can laugh about it now. Will we approve the recommendation to go with Fern's Lawn Care?
Okay, a motion, Jeff, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, John, is there any further discussion with regards to the issue? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item is discussion of the preliminary twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget.
Who, will one of you reach out to Fern's then, Jared?
Yeah, I will. Yeah.
Oh, by the way.
I don't know. Yeah. I think so.
So we'll be looking at the, uh, one that says hand, handout thirteen B first at the top, administration assumptions. So, for the revenue piece for this coming year, uh, we're anticipating that our summer school FTE will remain the same at twenty-one, so we will not receive any additional revenue for that piece. Um, as we talked about just briefly earlier, we're adding nine FTE to our September twenty eighteen count, and that's to accommodate for the differences in the four K kindergarten and then the senior class that's graduating this year.
Just to make it clear, it's FTE students, not staff.
Correct. So that increases our three-year rolling average from one thousand five hundred and ninety students to one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight students. And I calculated the dollar amount based on our current per student amount of ninety-seven hundred. So that's an additional seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. And then, when I calculated the three hundred dollar per pupil increase in the revenue limit, because we will.